Carolyn, you see our live. All right, we just flipped over to 6:30 for the gavel bang. We'll call the October meeting of the Westport Town Council to order. We will start with a pledge to the flag.
Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. My council members, Jenny is on vacation, I believe. My council members read minutes from the September meeting. I will motion to approve them as presented. Got a motion from Russell. Can I get a second, please?
A second?
Okay, Dolores, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please. Aye. It says put on October 25th agenda under superintendent's update. This is? Oh, roads. Okay. We haven't voted on that yet. So the next item is funeral deeds, adjustments, and payroll vouchers. Got two, three things on the payroll to sign. One funeral deed. Shouldn't we? Is as presented?
Make a motion.
Okay. Have a second. Russell.
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, please. Aye. Opposed? You're further down in the agenda, but do you want to be moved up? Are you okay with where you're at?
Yep.
Okay. So, Rachel? Come on up to the microphone.
You guys have a copy of my update memo? If not, I have some.
I've got it electronically.
I can pass it on.
Thank you.
Okay, so I won't read it word for word because it's two pages, page and a half. But I can read the project update, what's kind of, not much has happened in the past month. I have some information on here about the direction we're going and kind of the next steps. At this point, I do have a change order for Striegel to present, change order number three. Along with that, we'll be updating the guide five, which is what USDA calls their budget sheet, kind of outline where the money for this change order is coming from in the project. And we'll have to submit that to USDA at the same time. With that said, we're supposed to have a construction meeting this Thursday since USDA is not working right now. I would propose we postpone that until USDA can attend the meeting. Otherwise, unless there's something, Damon, that you or the board would like to talk about with the contractor, I don't know that we, I don't know that it would be a beneficial use of time. I'll touch base on that. I haven't heard anything for a while. Right. Right, I think we processed the change order for that already, so, yeah, I'll touch base on it with, with Monty. But yeah, as far as actual work on site, nothing's been done and kind of been a holding pattern until we figure out kind of the next steps.
Any word from IDEM about?
We'll have to resubmit a complete new permit. So we're in the process of updating the plans. It's mostly the plan sheets to show where the new location is. We will need to get geotechnical, some, some sort of geotechnical analysis done to show that the soils can support it, that type of thing. So in the process of that, next month, I'll bring a contract amendment. I had mentioned it via an email to move funds around, just to move it from some of the other phases into a design phase.
Okay.
To do that redesign.
You're not asking for that tonight?
No, I don't have it tonight.
That'll be fine.
I'll bring it next month.
Okay.
What I do have tonight is Striegel's change order number three, which I brought some copies of it. I didn't know if you had had a chance to look through it because I think I sent it kind of late. It is kind of a big.
We need to act on this tonight, or is this something that we could also make them up to review?
That's up to you. Given that USDA can't approve it right now, I would say you probably have a little bit of time, but hopefully they'll come back to work soon so we can keep the project moving. This covers the directional drilling along Washington Street.
Which is already done.
Correct. Chemical piping replacement at the plant.
Which is already done.
I don't think they've done the chemical pipe yet.
They haven't.
Nope.
Okay.
And time extension, which at this point, they've asked for a year just because of the unknowns. Given the, how long it typically takes to get permits approved, it'll, once we get the IDEM permit to you to review and then resubmit it to IDEM, it'll probably be 60 days for approval. So I don't think they anticipate doing any more onsite work until January when they'll do the lift, finish up the lift station work, and then they probably won't be back to the plant until, if, for the SAGAR until next summer. It was kind of the soil conditions with the water and stuff is what postponed it this year, and I expect the same thing will happen next spring. It'll just be wet. So yes, you probably have time to review that for another month.
Okay, if there's nothing terribly negative, it's, don't act on this tonight. I would say I understand most of it, but I would like the chance to go through.
Yep, certainly. And then at the end of, on the back of the.
Gloria, can you see to it that this gets on the agenda, change order number three?
I just wanted to say, the last thing I have on the back of that, there's just three little bullet points on regulatory updates. And you probably saw the emails go through to IDEM quarterly three, quarter three updates to IDEM for the agreed orders. We've asked if we can close out the water one, the water system one, we haven't heard back yet, but hopefully, fingers crossed, they'll say we can, and that'll be one more checked off the list. I think the sampling is scheduled to start October 21st, or around that week. Lots of things moving.
Sampling that she's talking about, we are participating in a program for us, the forever chemicals, you're one of 10 sites in the entire state, it's gotten a grant to sampling, understanding Commonwealth is doing all of the sites.
We're doing 10, I think there was 15 total.
Oh, okay.
We've got 10.
You're one of those 10.
And it's a wide range of analytes that we're testing for. 20, 20 different things we're sampling for, for water quality, so it should give a good snapshot.
I was looking in the payroll vouchers, what we spent on sampling and testing, and we had lead and copper hit last month, it was almost $3,000 for testing of gems, H5s, and copper.
Well, hopefully we don't, hopefully we don't find anything.
The PFOS is completely covered by our grant, the town, no money whatsoever. The other upside is we are on the front, front end of any PFOS regulations that come into existence and participating. If we do find them, if we do have to treat for them, assuming, we should be pretty much front in line for any assistance to treat for it.
Yes, if anything is found on PFOS, the grant will cover the report that you need to write, to submit, to get funding, and they, at this point, the state has money for treating it. I don't know how long that money will last or what the strings all tied to that are, but you would definitely be in, set up well to access them. This is putting the town in a really good position. I hope we don't find anything, but if we do, then at least we know, it's better to know than not know.
If you see anybody wandering around down at the creek, looks like he's got a hazmat suit on, it's probably the Commonwealth engineer.
Spencer.
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 He cannot wear any cologne, there's.
Odorants, there's special.
His clothes have to be cotton, not polyester, and it's just crazy how these things can be contaminated. Guys probably got the, in whatever you've got on tonight anyway.
They'll probably do.
All right.
That's all I have for tonight.
You guys have any questions for Rachel? Thank you. Traffic ordinance update, did I ask to have this put on the agenda?
Yes, I think.
Okay. I'm not, I think, what came, what brought this about, we're not going to be making any changes tonight, certainly, because we don't have any ordinance in front of us, but looking at the ordinances that we've got right now with respect to parking on the streets, and we've got an ordinance from back in the 1980s that's, that would allow us to tow vehicles if they are parked on the streets. We don't enforce it a whole lot, but we've got some habitual offenders in town that I think we may be going after here at some point. Think there's some streets that we needed to put on traffic ordinance, just didn't make any progress on that. That's, that's what brought it, that's what brought it about. Superintendent Public Works, Damon.
I think that's the only thing I have this month is a bridge that was supposed to start, it's been, say, put on hold, just delayed a little bit. The sewer main runs along the bridge and attaches to the bridge, and I guess new federal law says that it longer attaches to the bridge. Well, there were some communications issue, there's, yeah, there's a picture.
Didn't do that anymore, it's not allowed.
So what we're trying to do now is get the bypass pumping set up, getting this redesigned, moved, so they can build a bridge. Few different scenarios we're looking at. Obviously, we'll go the most cost effective, IDEM will allow us to do it, but that's why the bridge ain't tore out right now. See what direction we're going, and we didn't know it was supposed to been moved, eight before they come down to demo the bridge, they want to know when we's going to set it up. Did the water, we got the water done, but not putting blame anywhere, but that's, that's the hole up. Hopefully, as soon as we can get this bypass pumping going.
Damon?
Oh, I'm sorry, the commuter crossings.
Yeah, the paser rating.
Yeah, Brian gave us an estimate on the, to do, update the phaser rating and the five-year plan. I think the total was $6,000.
Yep, yep, $6,000 lump sum.
Which I thought was pretty fair. I think, Gloria, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they charged us $5,000 last year just for the phaser rating, done them both this year, all of for.
Under 10, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, we, of course, we estimated it all high when we talked about it.
So we have a contract here, about the $6,000, there's six items that they're going to do. One of them is a five-year plan, court objectives and measures plan, there are quality control check of 10 road segments, update pavement surface valuation rating, paser for streets. I guess I'll look at all of them.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I mentioned the two, two biggest ones that wired to be done.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and, it's got a place for my signature. Check it. Thank you. Signify by saying aye, please. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you. Anybody have anything for me?
Damon, come here.
We just wanted to give it to you, just give.
Okay, the community building as a disaster shelter, Mike Snyder. Mike is out on a hazmat spill right now, and he's not going to make it, so he asked, pushed to next week, or next month, excuse me. He did come down here and looked at the community building, he looked at the kitchen, looked at the front room, and we've got everything needed for a, an emergency shelter except showers. Building has Wi-Fi, the generator hookup out there, there's plenty of room, kitchen with two refrigerators, the front room could possibly even be used to house pets if need be, and the adults back here, I forget how many he said by Red Cross calculations, 80-something? Yeah. They could house back here. There's some paperwork that he wants us to sign and vote on. This would basically put us on the list, it would allow the Red Cross to come in and manage the shelter should they need to set it up. This is a pretty cool thing, but Mike was really very impressed with the facility here. Yeah, John? Well, I think it's going to be moved, one that's down at the lift station now, going to come up here. Okay. He, well, that explains why when he looked at the connector and took a picture of it, said he didn't think we had anything that would fit that. Oh, okay, that explains that then. Mike is a new guy, I'm finding to, him, finding him to be very, very much a go-getter. He was the deputy director over in Columbus, he'd work with, and real interested age with the, well. Okay. The SIRPC is here, Kylie, out the water tower grant, we are going to conduct a public hearing out the water tower grant. While she's coming, we had, what did you call the two meetings that we had? Was it public, I called them public input meetings.
Yep, public engagement meetings, yep.
Public engagement meetings, thank you.
Same thing.
I tried to get close.
No, you're good.
Water tower inspection has been completed, they did get inside, finally, got pictures. We have a copy of the preliminary report that we've shared with SIRPC to put in with the grant best. Repair and refurbish estimate is $422,000, is why we are going after a grant, but it's not like it's another project to just pile on, continuing to pile on projects, this is work that needs to be done, not in dire straits yet. Definitely, the water tower needs some tenderloin care, sure. We would like to have some customers who are willing to write letters in support of the project. Kylie, how do we, do I just announce we open up the public hearing?
Yep.
For the water tower grant, if anybody, anything to say, or do you have anything you want to say first?
Yeah, I do have some required language. So like Brian said, I am Kylie Sparks from the Southeastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. Victoria and I have been working on this grant application for the Westport Water Improvement Project, and there's some required language as part of the grant that I'll go ahead and say. So on or about October 24th, 2025, the town of Westport intends to apply to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs for a grant proposal from the State Community Development Block Grant, CDBG wastewater drinking water program, with final applications being due December 19th, 2025. This program is funded by Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. These funds are to be used for a community development project that will include the following activities. The town of Westport's water project includes rehabilitation efforts for the only elevated storage tank in their distribution system. The rehabilitation at the tank includes a full blast and reco of the tank interior and exterior, non-coating related work on the interior and exterior of the tank, site security improvements, and other general improvements. Included in the total amount of the CDBG funds to be requested is $441,679. The amount of the CDBG funds proposed to be used for the activities that will benefit low to moderate income people is approximately $231,439.79, or 52.4% of the request. The applicant proposed is to expend an estimated $109,884 in non-CDBG funds on the project. These non-CDBG funds will be derived from the following sources, town of Westport. If anyone, like Brian said, we did have some public engagement meetings last month, and they were very well attended, and we also have an online survey going out right now. Our proposal is due October 24th, but the sense of full application isn't due until December 19th. We'll still take some of those surveys. Right now, we have around a little over 30, so if people still haven't filled out those surveys, you can still push that as well. We need as much feedback as possible, but other than that, if anyone has any questions about the project or about the process.
Can you say any more about the letters of support? Did you have some, I don't want to call them form letters, but anything that could help on what they might need, like to say?
Yeah, we can definitely draft those letters. Sometimes we look at the surveys and stuff, and if there's someone that has had some, gave some really good feedback on the surveys, then we'll pull those too, or ask them if they want to sign letters, but yeah, we can definitely send templates. I'll get with Victoria, and we can send those by the end of this week for you guys to get signed.
So if anybody out there is interested in sending a letter in support of the water tower project, let's get with one of us board members, and sure, we get a, get you some help, but might be good to say. Oh, it looks, there's a sign-in sheet going around?
Yes, yep, there's a sign-in sheet going around just to show the participation for the public.
Make sure you, make sure you sign that.
There's no further questions, just to kind of outline again the timeline, so the proposal will be due October 24th, and then we'll have a site visit with Okra, we'll come down, and they will talk about a proposal that was submitted, they'll give us some feedback, that way we are going in for full application with as strong as application as possible, and then we'll hear back in February for the award announcements. And then, Brian, I do have a support letter too, if you would sign it for proposal.
The other thing I told Kylie I would do is make a motion that the board itself is fully in support of the water tower project, and we can get it into the minutes as such. But he would like to second motion. Russell? Okay. Any other discussion from the board members here? We have a motion in support of the water tower project. I'll go ahead and sign the letter, and seconded by Russell, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please. Aye.
Aye.
Records show it was unanimous. Okay.
Probably a couple of things.
Based on some of the discussions that we've had on the Tuesday office hours, we've found some nuisances that fall in, kind of fall in the gray areas, not necessarily covered by any of our existing ordinances. And I found a nuisance ordinance that we drafted back in 2019, when I was still on the board then, and we never did anything with it. And I found out tonight where that came from. Gloria drafted it for me, she based it on an ordinance from, for sales. Alex, I'm going to give you a copy to look at it. My guidelines would be, I need something that is simple and enforceable, if, if at all. Russell, do you mind if I talk about your libertarian lean? He's not real in favor of more ordinances, to a certain extent, I think I agree with him. I think we need to use what we have on the books to the fullest extent that we can. This gets into noise, it overlaps with our noxious weeds and rank vegetation ordinance that's already on the books. It gets into some stuff that will make you blush, talks about prostitution and other things.
And streetwalker.
Morals and decency. It goes pretty, pretty deeply down the rabbit hole, which is why it's a can of worms. I found this in office hours with Dolores, she blushed, and I sent, I gave her a hard copy of it and asked her to bleed on it.
And I did, and it's right, it does overlap with what we have, and then it dwells into a lot more than what we assume. I don't know.
So I have like 10 to 20 copies of this up here, if anybody would like to take one and, and read it. I don't think it'll put you to sleep, it's, it's really kind of interesting.
Sales was very thorough.
Yeah, very thorough, is how I would say it.
They don't leave anything to the imagination, I will say that. I started my list.
Yeah.
So.
But I promised Russell that we would not do anything substance with this until after he gets back winter break in Florida, so we're looking well into maybe April of next year, so there is no urgency on this, but it is something that I, that I found in my archives, that we at least had considered, was on the board previously, but it was never passed, so. So it's four pages. I did open up the margins. It was previously five. I could get it on front, back, front, back, save some paper, save some trees. But these will be up here. If you want to grab a copy and take it home and look at it, give us a little feedback. In order to pass something like this, it's first going to go through Alex. You've got to assure me that it's something that we can enforce, something that's reasonable. Even after, if we do something, Russell may still be a no vote. That doesn't mean that he'd am or anything, that I understand exactly where he's coming from. But maybe if we get something that's simpler than this, maybe, maybe it'll, it'll pass scrutiny with Russell. So Alex, please make sure you get a copy of this before. And I can email you it electronically as well.
So I'm assuming that that can be edited?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah.
This is not, it says ordinance 2019-2, but it is not on the books. We never passed it. Matter of fact, you get down to the end, it's not even complete, and there's no place for anybody to sign. So, and talk about any fines or anything.
Very much a giraffe.
Yes, very much.
Because I was, I'd kind of forgotten about it. I was like, I don't even know what shape that is in. It may have not even
I mean, this town government is a fine line. And I would be just as happy as Russell's feeling, words in your mouth, correct me, that we should keep the roads up, keep the water and the sewer flowing, and keep the police department on duty. But it gets into neighbors. They don't control their pets. They make too much noise. They dump junk in their yards. Whether some, some proper, adjoining property owners aren't comfortable talking to their neighbors, does, the town needs to step in. You know, we can have that discussion on, on how much authority we should have. Most of it's common sense. We've got to pet, control it.
There was an incident, one of the things that spurred that on was an incident where somebody drove through town at like 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and they kept honking their horn at every stop. And they literally did it all across town. I had a video of it. We couldn't get the license. But it woke up a lot of people, and a lot of people complained. And the police department said, well, you don't have a noise ordinance. We can't really do anything about it. That was one of the incidents I remember, but we haven't had anything like that in a long time.
You know, there's somebody in town that's got a base that rattles even my windows. Have you heard him? Them? Him, her? I don't know. Okay, well.
The what?
It's a her.
Her, oh, her, oh, okay.
Okay, some announcements. Dumpster day will be Thursday, October 23rd. You should have gotten a announcement in your water bill. The pickleball and tennis court refurbish is done. Niece and nephew are probably down there playing on it right now. New siding inside the large room in the community building. Take a look. Be thankful. They do a good job. I'm really impressed.
And it is not metal.
It's metal. What's behind me here is, so when they first put this up, they put it up with tape, and it kept falling down. This, this metal will take just about any tape you want to throw at it. But I have purchased a bunch of high-strength refrigerator magnets and some magnets with a hook on it. We use those at the Fall Festival. This has been up since last Monday. Week now. Do is, but often, they're going to, Connie is going to tell the people that rent the building now. They're all over there by the door. The siding of the little timer back there is being held up by magnets now. You try to use a pushpin, it will probably bend it. Stuff's pretty sturdy. I was worried about the acoustics in here. If you run your hand across this, it does have a texture to it, and I think the slats breaking up the ringing that goes on. Dob, Connie, Damon, whoever else, the rest of the community building committee that was involved in it. I am, I'm impressed. Small town seat on the area plan commission is now filled. I met with Newpoint, Milhousen, St. Paul, Doug Westerfeld at the Greensburg Library last Wednesday evening, and we installed Co-Portland Robertson from CRF Roofing and Restoration as the small town representative on the APC. This seat has been vacant for almost a year. It was previously held by Jay Shutmer on the, he was from the Milhousen Town Council, but he's moved out of the area, and that, that seat came up. Portland is on the Business Association. Somehow, it came up in, in a discussion, and talked with Doug, some of the other folks on the APC. He came to the meeting Wednesday night, and Newpoint, and Milhousen, and St. Paul, we all got to talk to him. They all voted unanimously to stall him. We are what's called the Small Town Advisory Committee. Okay. That brings us down. Audience, subject to the three-minute comments. It has anything they'd like, yes, ma'am? Can you give me your name, please?
Charlessa Shepard.
Say that again?
Charlessa Shepard.
S-H-A-R-L-E-S-S-A? What is your address, Charla?
105 East Race Street.
Okay.
And Water Company, I went to them, and they told me to come here and see if there was anything I could get help with.
How, how much is the water bill?
It was $541.41. There's a spike in it.
Yeah. Whoa, yeah.
I have no idea.
I think that's, humbly, it should be down here.
Yeah.
It's, so it's something that started and then stopped. It lasted for, boy, that was, looks like that was running possibly full blast for about So this, since there's nothing that was fixed, she doesn't have a bill from a plumber or anything, that's why I think she had to come here. Carolyn, do you, go ahead.
Did you have a significant water pool that you saw?
No.
No.
At the time, the water was leaking, and they came out and fixed the water leaks. But that wasn't
Who came out and fixed? Damon?
Damon.
Okay. Huh, oh.
Do you know if she's had an adjustment in the last year? I'd had an adjustment within the last year, so it's not like it's a chronic problem. So we get these occasionally, whether it's a stuck toilet. It's something that, I don't even think a toilet would run like that, would it?
I about had a heart attack when I seen the bill. I'm like, oh, love.
I'm okay with craning. It's enough to come and ask for it. Okay, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve an adjustment, and then Carolyn will have to work it out. I'll be down there tomorrow, and I'll sign it, I'll sign off on it tomorrow. So I got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye, please. Aye. Got it.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Yes, Carolyn? I did. Thursday, October 23rd. I, I, I kind of went, went past it real quick. It said that everybody should have got a copy of the flyer in their water bill. Jenny should be back on vacation. That's why we pushed it all the way to October 23rd. Okay. Anybody else from the floor? Once, twice, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
I second.
Okay. I have a motion adjourned by Russell, second by Dolores. All those in favor signify by saying, by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you. Copies of the nuisance